Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, September 11th, 2017. This is the Westwood Board of Selectmen. We will start the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have permission to Westcat to audio and video record the meetings? Or anybody else would like to record the meeting? Hearing none. Okay. So we obviously want to start the meeting. The moment of reflection being nine eleven, we want to thank the police and fire for a great display along 109 today. For any of the residents who didn't see it, they had a very large American flag suspended high up on a fire engine ladder. And it was very nice, it was very classy, we received a lot of commentary. So we want to thank them for all that work. We're really looking forward to a week from this Saturday. Saturday, September 23rd, this will be our annual Westwood Day. The events will actually begin on Friday night, the 22nd, at 7:00 PM at the football game, our annual Holliston versus Westwood game. Saturday will begin with a 5K road race at 9:00 AM and a kids' fun run at 10:00 AM. And 10:00 AM is also when the vendor area opens up. This day has grown every year. We are really excited for this day. And it's most successful because of the number of volunteers who come forward. So we'd ask again this year that you'd consider signing up in increments of two and a half hour shifts. And you can visit westwoodday.com in order to do that. The Board of Selectmen participation is involves speaking at the football game on Friday night and some participation at the road race on Saturday morning. You're gonna participate on Saturday morning?
I am. I'll also be at the football game because I was there this weekend, had them announce it already, so.
Oh, okay. Do you have any interest? Do you want to split it up a little bit?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
Sure.
I would prefer not to do either. So Mrs. Hyde will handle the Friday night events and Mr. Walsh will handle the Saturday morning events. And I'll be chasing three kids around the vendor area.
Yeah, you have to handle the one o'clock event.
Oh, okay.
Main stage.
Where's that? Okay, the event, main stage presentation, the Board of Selectmen announcement, welcome participation, state officials announce winners of the 5K and fun run and thank sponsors. Okay, so I'll take that one o'clock event. Does that work? Friday night, Saturday morning, one o'clock? Christine, does that work?
Yeah, that's correct.
So do we not do the town hall thing anymore?
So we, there's a couple departments that still like to have a presence. So we put that out there. I don't know, I think Dottie was handling who, it's a very small area, she still designates a town hall area that we can go into, but it's not a lot. It's not like the first two years that we did it. Like there's um, do you know, is planning one doing one? No, they've done one in the past, but I don't think there was anything big going on. Conservation likes to do it, Youth and Family Services, the Senior Center, we'll say the departments that offer a service to the community or have things to give out, they...
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering if we wanted to do like an hour with the Board of Selectmen, if we could be there around it and advertise an hour and just be there and be available.
That works.
Yeah, we'd do it around the one o'clock hour.
I think it's pretty fun.
Because we'll probably help you there anyway. Does that work?
I think so. Figure something out, maybe, you know, just a half hour, whatever, just be fun to be a little more available.
I would do it, you know, yeah, coincide with the one o'clock hour.
Sure.
On Wednesday, Wednesday, September 27th, Mr. Gillette, the Finance Director Pam Dukeman and I will be attending the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Meeting with the School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools regarding the town's application for funding of a capital project. This mainly involves the elementary schools. So the school committee submitted its statement of interest in February. The Board of Selectmen approved that, and now the School Building Assistance Authority would like to hear from town officials and town leaders. So there'll be a lot more information to come on that as this process.
Is there actually a presentation that gets made?
I think by the school department, yeah. And I think the thing that's noteworthy is that we made a cut.
Right.
Not everybody's being invited. Half the people that submitted requests are not being invited, so.
So will you guys get to see the presentation before him?
I don't know, we'll be with him Thursday, so, I mean Wednesday.
I'd ask to see it if I were you. I mean, part of the reason you're there is hopefully you find that you want to express...
Yeah, I wasn't aware there was a presentation. But is that...
I would imagine that there's a presentation.
I think you should find out.
Yeah, okay.
Because you might get asked questions.
Well, I think the issue that they want is to see a demonstration that the town's in support of the project should they decide to vote. It's not a commitment, it's more that we're...
Yeah, well, that we're committed to the process. Right.
Yeah, that's a process and not a project.
Right, right.
Process.
I think we're years away from a project.
Yeah, because the application was just for one building, the Hanlon, because they needed to identify a building in order to submit an application. But that doesn't mean that that's the plan. It's just a starting place. It'll be interesting to hear how it goes.
This Wednesday, we will be, again, Mr. Gillette, Mrs. Dukeman and I, meeting with the school superintendent, the chair of the school committee, and the school department's budget director for the purposes of starting a budget steering committee for this year, just laying out some milestones and inviting more interested people in as we go along, and trying to get that issue resolved as early as possible as we head to town meeting in the spring. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. So we have a public hearing, change of beneficial interest, Kiara Bistro. I would invite you both up. Janice, we had Kiara here not too long ago. Why don't you just give us a really high level overview? If anybody doesn't have any questions, we can talk a little bit.
Okay, perfect. Mr. LeCoutte was in touch recently and told me that he has a change of beneficial interest for his business. And he was here in March as well, there was a previous change. And now Steve has told me that he's now the Class A member with approximately 80% of his shares. And then two Class B members have approximately two...
One and a half, not even two percent.
Not even two percent. And then the others have about 18%. Mr. LeCoutte has submitted all the paperwork necessary to be submitted to the ABCC. Corey applications have been submitted and processed for the new owners with satisfactory results. And Steve is hoping that the ownership interest will be effective October 1st, 2017.
This was basically, it's basically downsizing. I had a lot of friends behind me when we opened Kiara to the tune of 16 Class B investors. So this is an opportunity, we're just bringing in a couple of Class C investors that are basically buying out 14 of the 16 Class B members. Two decided they'd like to stay, but, which is fine, that's their prerogative, but the rest of them hopefully will, you know, get a check sometime this year and get some of their original investment back and...
Perfect.
We'll just be a smaller company as far as numbers of heads and ownership, so.
I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Any comments?
I move we approve the request to change of beneficial interest for MKP LLC doing business as Kiara Bistro, and this would be contingent upon approval by the ABCC.
I'll second.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here who has any comment? Hearing none? I'll ask for a vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thanks, Steve, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Janice.
Thank you.
Stay wherever you are, Janice.
Good to see you.
I'm inviting Anthony's out.
Good night, Steve.
Good night, Steve.
See you tomorrow.
Welcome.
Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
Janice, what's going on?
Okay, this is Tracy Goulet, she's the new manager for Anthony Cold Fire Pizza. And this is Kyle Gill, he's an attorney from Joe Davlin's office, representing Anthony's.
Okay.
Tonight, I was informed that this new manager, Ms. Goulet, she is currently employed at Anthony's and has been since March of this year. She was previously employed as the manager of record at Bertucci's in Brockton. And her core application has been submitted with no negative results. And that is just about it. All the required documents have been submitted, fees.
And you're fine? The ALCO commission is fine?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any questions, are there any questions?
Well, I've already met.
Any questions?
You're here, do you want to say anything?
Everything sounds great.
Otherwise, I have no questions, this is fine. I mean, it's regular course of business. I move that we approve the change of manager from Jeffrey Vigu to Tracy Goulet for Anthony's Cold Fire Pizza, and this approval will be contingent upon ABCC approval.
Second.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody with any comments? None. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in.
It wasn't a public hearing, but we still get public participation.
Not that one.
Not anymore.
Oh.
Change of managers, I think.
Good thing no one spoke up.
Yeah.
Well, you'd still let them speak up. You'd still let them do that.
All right, the lien process for unpaid building health and conservation violations. Do you want to talk to that, Mike?
Yeah. And Nora's here to assist me, or I may not get it right.
Welcome back, Nora.
So at your call town meeting this year, we went forward with, originally we had gone forward with several, we narrowed it down to the building commissioners and the Board of Health as well. And what it is, is a process where we can charge lien, charge, charges and penalties to individuals that don't follow the required regulations and don't do their work in time or in the process, that they've been told to do it by the inspectors. In that case, some of this goes unpaid over the course of a year or more. And so we asked the town meeting for the authority to take those unpaid charges and fines and turn them into liens, which then would be incorporated into the, incorporated into the property tax bill and collectible through a foreclosure process. You'll recall that the Finance Commission had a little bit of reluctance with that because they felt that, you know, when you're leaning a property, it can be, that can be harsh, and they wanted some process. So we suggested that a member of the Board of Selectmen, I think it's the chairs, but...
I think that's what we told Frank.
Yeah, I think so. The chair of the Board of Selectmen, the chair of the assessors, and the town treasurer would sit, review the request and the justification for leaning it and incorporating it into the property tax bill. If that committee voted that it was appropriate to do so, that's the course it would take. In the other case, if they did not, then it would continue to try to collect it through the normal process.
That's what I was gonna say, what do you do now? If Joe Doyle issues a fine to a contractor, what do you do?
Request collection. If the, if the property owner refuses to pay, then we have an option of going to court.
Oh, right. So when you issue that, so even though you're actually issuing the fine to the contractor that attaches to the property now in a certain way...
Well, actually, the fine is almost always for the property owner. It's usually the property owner who incurs the fine.
Oh, okay.
I suppose there are some instances where it's a contractor, but more often than not, it's the property owner.
Okay.
Who's either failed to acquire the right permits or has done work contrary to that. We have, we have some going back many, many years that are substantial fines, I think we're looking at going forward. Over the past year, and especially since this was passed by town meeting, we've had a greater rate of success in collecting on our fines without the need for...
Oh, good.
And it's not the best outcome.
This seems more efficient, though, too.
Yes. And the courts don't want to hear this stuff. This is not what the courts were made for.
It uses our staff time.
It does.
So I have to tell you, I just don't need another thing on my plate.
So this would be one meeting a year.
I was thinking about this, Nancy, the third member usually does less during the year.
I don't really care, I just know we told the town in the spring it would be the chair's. It's just what we put forward. It wasn't that we had a big discussion, but...
But I think...
All those in favor, it's Walsh.
Yeah, I...
No, I think it's good, I think this is...
It's either the chair or is designated, so.
Yeah.
I think we just saw that happen.
Yeah.
No, I think it's good. No, and I think it's a good group, I mean, you know.
Shall we make it official? I move Michael Walsh be the representative from the Board of Selectmen on this lien process committee.
And you can go further, the assessors have already identified the individual they want to serve, which is Mark.
And, and...
And Jim Gavin.
And Jim Gavin automatically, yeah.
And I'll extend that motion, and we approve the appointment of Mark Murphy from the Board of Assessors and Jim Gavin as town treasurer to the same committee.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Request to post and fill a town engineer and a recreation assistant.
Can we wait on that?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I think...
Joan, Joan's coming in?
Oh, okay.
Joan and Todd.
Okay.
You're just moving too fast.
I'm moving fast.
You said that, but I don't think so, we'll see.
Fall town meeting?
What am I missing, where am I going here?
Fall town meeting.
Fall town meeting.
Oh, yeah, I did want to go through this, okay. So this is for the fall town meeting, which would be scheduled for, I'm sorry, to have the Board of Selectmen discuss the reasoning for having a fall town and if the board decides to move forward with a fall town meeting to open the warrant. Yeah, I saw it somewhere, Monday, and if it's held, it'll be Monday, November 13th at 7:30. I looked at this list, Michael, when I got the book, I mean, I do feel like there's enough to, enough to have one.
Yes.
Well, there are a couple important reasons why we need to...
There's a compelling one, yes.
The Blue Hills Regional School, but Pam has a couple of things that are, I think, becoming time sensitive with creating the accounting changes, the accounting housekeeping that are required out of the Municipal Improvements Act. So I think it's...
So I know we've taken some action, but can we just go through some of these? Blue Hills Regional School District is one that we definitely, that's time sensitive, right?
That's time sensitive, right.
We need to get to that. The Gay Street Sidewalk Design Funding, Arc of South Norfolk Permission for Sidewalk Easement on Town Land, which we've, essentially, the board has approved.
You've approved with the promise that you'll come back and get a grant of easement, which can only be done by town meeting.
Thompson Avenue Street Acceptance Request, Hedgegro Lane...
Now, this one, the Thompson Avenue may or may not go forward, I mean, we're still working with the residents on a solution, so this is a hold for, if it goes one direction, if it goes another direction, we won't need...
Did we ever have a...
Oh, wait a minute, the Thompson, the Thompson Ave...
Thompson Ave is ready to move.
It's ready to go forward.
It's the next one that I thought of.
It's the next one, Hedgegro, yeah.
Hence, it doesn't have a number.
Right, okay. So that's still a question mark, right?
Yeah.
Nora, the possible rezoning at 500 and High, is that the Obed Baker?
No.
No, that's the professional building, the Westwood Pediatrics Associates.
And what are we looking to do there?
There's a possible petition article, we haven't received it. We had the new property owner came and talked to the planning board about the desire to create a parking lot adjacent to the building, where there's a wooded area that has some, just a few parking spaces on it, it's residentially zoned. They're proposing rezoning it to commercial. I don't know that they'll be coming to fall town meeting.
Okay.
They came to the planning board to say that they were interested, but it would be a petition article, so.
Zoning Amendment Related to Accessory Uses.
There is a request for one of the businesses on Wilson Way, which is in the Highway Business District, to include an allowable accessory use for an interior cafeteria. Right now, our zoning bylaw allows them in the industrial district and the ARO district, but does not allow them in the Highway Business District.
He feels this would make it more marketable if he was able to offer it.
Zoning Amendment Related to Medical Uses.
That is, we have several definitions for different medical uses in different districts. Office of a doctor that is in one district, another district calls it medical office. We want to consolidate the terminology and properly define it.
Okay.
So it's just definitional?
It's definitional.
You know, I have to tell you, this number 10, the general bylaw waiving the dog fee license for seniors, I have, I do have some concerns. I mean, I fear that we could waive the fee, but I just want to make sure that we're still keeping our compliance rate up. I felt like reading this, that people are gonna feel like they don't have to license their dog anymore. It's a public health issue.
The experience, I think, that communities have had, at least reported by Dottie, was just the opposite is true, but...
Yeah, she's a very good return rate on her, she's very good.
Can she come talk next month about that to us?
Yeah, I mean, this is just a hold anyways, so.
Oh, I know. Interim office space, town hall in Arcabi.
Possibility of redesigning. When the police station gets finished and we hope to transition Board of Selectmen meetings over there, we really need to get some people out of the basement. And the idea would be to convert some or all of this space to not meeting space, but office space.
The municipal facilities conceptual planning, is that just kind of the master plan?
Yes, and so, so, you know, we have some, we've allocated some small amount of money to do, to get the thing kicked off, but there'll need to be some, some additional funds that will be necessary, not to go into the design of anything, but to continue with the conceptual plans and discussions so we can make some educated choices.
And the next two are just amending how we budget things, but not moving money.
Right.
I guess the only, I, so I, is there no chance we can get the Obed Baker RFP up and going?
I hope to, I'm going to come to your next meeting to report on that.
Oh, good.
I think we have an RFP ready to go out by then. And if it is ready, then we would be...
We might make it.
...pass the article.
Okay.
And I have a question on Article 2 in this list about the establishment of a cap on the number of residential units. I, my question is really more a thought, I really think that should be coming from the planning board. As, I mean, they're, they're the ones that handle zoning. And, you know, if anything, co-sponsoring, but I don't think it should be just a Board of Selectmen article.
Well, they do not appear to be interested in sponsoring an article this year. So what I would say is, I believe an article is appropriate. I think it's a, an appropriate reaction. We've heard, especially it is linked in task force meetings, that residents have a fear that there are incredible numbers of units that could come out of these areas, which is not the case. And I think they would be, they would feel better if there was a cap in addition to a percentage that was placed on it. The current makeup of the planning board did not necessarily support sponsoring an article, there was a...
But you didn't have a, you didn't have a full board present.
We had one member that was not present.
I just, I would request politely back to them if they could reconsider. I think it's worth them being very much a part of it. I think it's, you know, they're responsible for zoning, I think it would be a little strange that they would be on the sidelines on this, yet hear about it. I just think it should be something they would be part of.
Either way, they're...
I mean, they're the ones that initiated all the zoning change in the first place.
Correct, and they, what I heard at the last meeting was that they, most of the members, there were four members at that meeting present, three of the four feel that the bylaw as written is sufficient and gives them the flexibility they need to make approvals. One of the four members wanted to make an additional change to the bylaw, aborting the footnote that was a petition article last May that didn't have full support among the rest of the board. They may, they may be convinced to co-sponsor an article.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it's an article they would take on on their own, I think they would say they wouldn't be putting an article forward otherwise.
Okay.
Now, they're responsible for reviewing all zoning articles, no matter who the sponsor is. So they will review and comment on it either way.
They need to report on it on the town meeting floor.
They, yes, yes, they have, they already have their advertisement has already been placed.
Well, that's pretty telling in and of itself if they're saying the article's fine as to their receptivity to an article, so I think you should go back to them and ask if we can at least co-sponsor, if not have them sponsor. They were the ones who originally designed the article, and they had considered back then putting a cap.
They have.
And I think it's created a lot of concern.
Different board membership at the time.
Correct, but it's created a lot of concern, not having a cap, and people maybe drawing conclusions that might not be realistic in terms of could it play out that way? So I think it'd be helpful for people to know that it's only intended to allow for subject to approvals. It doesn't even mean that that's what's gonna happen, but...
Yeah, I do, I do think, I don't, I don't want to miss the opportunity at town meeting to bring this forward, though.
I wouldn't miss the opportunity, but I...
I think if you ask them, but I don't want it to get lost. I think we've, if you can come back at our next meeting with what it would look like, regardless of the sponsorship.
So I have that right now, I have the language, if you want me to go over it?
No, no, I don't, I don't think we need to tonight, I mean, we still have time.
Yeah, I'd do it together with all the articles.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe at the next meeting?
Yeah.
You have a meeting with the planning board before the 25th?
Yeah, it'll, I do think that will be very helpful, having a number.
Having the air conditioning going and the window open.
Um, okay.
The air conditioning's going and the window's open.
Any questions? Anybody?
Thanks, Nora, that's good. So we need to...
So we need to open the warrant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise, the, if, we have a town meeting on November 13th unless we opt out.
Don't need to, because unless you are opting out, you only need to vote to opt out of...
Yeah, so we don't need to vote to have one, but we need to open the warrant.
Correct.
So I move that we open the warrant for the November 13th town meeting.
Will you put a closure gate on it?
Fall town meeting. No, we have to come back and close it.
Well, you can suggest when you're gonna close it, if you want.
Well, it shouldn't be open for long, so I think the 25th.
Yeah, is it 25th or 24th?
I wouldn't make that as part of the motion.
Okay, so the intent is to bring it...
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mike, do you just want to touch for a minute on the Blue Hills warrant article?
Sure. So the Blue Hills Regional School has been for some years looking for an appropriation of funds from the School Building Assistance Program. I believe it's in the vicinity of $90 million total estimated cost for the project, a little bit more than that. They have just recently received indication from the School Building Assistance that they will go forward and fund 51% of that project, meaning that the member communities or the Blue Hill Regional District will have to come up with the other 49% of the project. They're planning to vote in their upcoming meeting in September. To do that, they postponed the vote for a few days. We indicated that there's a 60-day time period between the day they vote on it to the day that member communities need to decide to reject. It's not about approval, but to reject. We want to give the voters an opportunity here, and I think other communities do too. We indicated that we have, the best we're gonna do is November 13th for a meeting, so that was right at the 60-day trigger point. They pushed the meeting, I think, to the 19th, and that gives us, that gives us plenty of time to then get back to them with any results of a down meeting vote. That vote goes forward, all the member communities have to vote in favor. If a community does reject the vote, there are two options basically that the district has. It can re, it can come back with another amount, doesn't even have to change, they can take another vote and try again, or modify the amount that they're asking for. That's one process, and then the communities would vote again. Or they could ask the member communities that have voted in favor to reconsider their vote and agree to fund the share of the, of whatever rejecting communities would otherwise have to pay. They would incorporate, so we would incorporate a portion as all the communities, it's all distributed on a pro round basis.
Okay.
So the second scenario really scares me, is that, let's say that 50% of them reject it, we have such a small percentage that now we no longer have a small percentage. So how do we know, how do we know what the outcome is gonna be? I mean, I think they told us...
Well, they would then have to distribute to us exactly what, what our share would be, what that amount would be in real terms and percentage basis. It still would be somewhat small compared to everybody else, but...
Well, yeah, but it could easily, I could see it easily doubling from the number that tells us.
It depends on how many, how many, yeah. So when you're taking a vote at town meeting, unless we get, unless we get a number earlier and the vote can be updated on town meeting floor, you'll be voting on a number that they have given you. You won't be voting on the possible number, so you're not giving, it's not a vote to say...
It's not an open-ended...
It's not an open-ended, you're authorizing a certain amount. And if it, if it comes back, I can tell you that it's highly unlikely, unless they get the information to us before we take the vote on town meeting, that we will be taking, that we will be taking a vote. I think it's, they just add 30 days, and then they, then they do a revote. I think it's just, they just add thirty days and then they then they do a revote, so.
So I'm just wondering if the if the biggest contributor rejects it, which I think is Rambo, if I'm not mistaken, could be Stoughton, but I think one of them is the largest contributor. So let's say that that fails and their contribution is almost forty percent, I think, right?
It's high, yeah.
It's pretty high, so what do they do with that forty percent, how they got to redistribute it?
They redistribute, they redistribute.
Do we then go back for a second vote with the town?
That in theory, that's what you do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of risk, this is the challenge for the regional school district, they've got to get so much support.
It is.
Um, there is a informational meeting, Mike, Thursday, September fourteenth at nine at the Blue Hill School. Are you, are you going, you are going, I I'm not going.
I can't though, we have another meeting already.
I don't know yet.
Okay, so we don't need to take a vote on that or anything, but I do think that's going to drive a lot of questions for us.
Mm-hmm.
As we get closer, okay, moving on, um, the annual tree lighting spa, I'm sorry, Todd.
Just going to ask, is Pam going as well?
Uh, just me.
The annual tree lighting ceremony will be on Sunday, December third, we have been very fortunate in the past to have sponsors, namely Roach Brothers and Clark House. Uh, and so Mike, you need, um, approval from the board to solicit donations, is that the action that we need to take?
Yes. Yes.
So.
I move that we authorize the town staff to accept donations from the annual tree lighting, for the annual tree lighting ceremony.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can go back to the town engineer.
Yeah. I don't know, time waits for no one, Mike.
Come on up, come on up, come on up. I got the letter for sponsorship from my law office long before I got the request to sponsor.
Yeah, we're out there rolling.
Welcome.
We start planning in July.
All right.
On time or sick.
Wish I could say the same, Todd.
Right.
So Todd, the Patriots home open.
Um, Todd, the town engineer position, is this the guy that went to the MWR?
That's correct.
And then what have you been doing in the interim?
We've been filling it with consultant based services, so.
Um, I read everything, Joan, do you have anything you want to talk about with town engineer?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I don't have any questions.
Nope.
I would just add that.
I think it's necessary.
That that we've tried to find town engineers in the past.
Right, hard to find.
And they're hard to find, and so we have some indication that there may be a a small pool of candidates that we would want to be able to consider. Because they they meet, they look like they're interesting candidates that meet our qualifications and our requirements. And so we we don't want to miss this opportunity that there might be a few people out there in the in the marketplace.
I mean, how do we compare the market salary wise, we?
I think we're competitive, I mean, I I, you know.
You know, the ranges, I mean, I know, all depends on qualifications.
I think we're right there, but I think a lot of what we've done over the past year is just take a look at our organization, especially after we did a reorg as recently as a year, a year or so ago. Um, and we just really wanted to see what goals and responsibilities we wanted to kind of cater this position to. I mean, it's going to be aimed as a town engineer primarily along with sewer responsibilities, a little bit of storm water right now because we're not quite sure where that MS four permit is going to go. Um, a lot of it paving, pavement management, things that really aren't my wheelhouse of expertise or. Running a, running our pavement management program, so we have some individuals that are definitely interested that would excel in all of the above. And we felt as always time, I mean, it's been a year, so want to be patient and I think it's.
That's good.
I think we've, it seems like we've been well served by the consultant in the meantime and.
Right.
But, um, I know that the this role has an important interface with the planning board.
Absolutely.
So that would probably be very helpful.
That's correct, and I just, I actually had a discussion with Abby after our department head meeting and she's, she's excited, it that's, you need that presence. And that's where I've seen the biggest void is that, and the consultant's done a tremendous job, they've provided coverage. Um, one consultant in particular has a gentleman that works for their firm that's very familiar with our town, the dynamics of our town, the politics of our town, and he's done a tremendous job. But that said, he's not in our office twenty, you know, so.
Right.
That's that's the missing element is that when they're having a discussion in the office or Abby needs to run something via the town engineer, they're not there. They're there to do the contracted work, but they're not there to help with the thinking and the creativity.
That's correct.
The other thing is I, I'll toot his horn, he won't, uh, is the department, the the department he's created and that exists today is. An inviting department for for people, the up and coming town engineers, and I think that we we we've seen that indication by a couple of people. That want to come, why do they want to come, because this is a great place to work, this is a place that's that's getting noticed and so I think that, I think that that's important.
Good job, Todd.
Well, the town supports a lot of what we do, I mean, I've said this a number of times, we're grateful for the support the board of selectmen provide along with the FinCom and. Planning and a lot of the other fellow departments, you guys allow us and give us the tools and we go out and make it happen, so.
Well, I I'm happy to move that we authorize the human resource director to work with the town administrator and the DPW director to post and fill the position of town engineer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose none.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd, you're welcome to stay for the discussion on the recreation assistant.
Going to go have dinner.
Mike, 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 try to toot your horn again using his words.
Awesome, thank you.
Good night, Todd.
Good night, Todd.
What happened to our recreation assistant?
Um, she resigned in the late summer and so we have held on filling the position because in our last contract negotiation with the SEIU. It was decided that this position would be a, become an SEIU position, it's really an administrative role, I wasn't there when that position was hired. Um, but it really is consistent with other administrative assistants and other departments in the town, so, uh. Uh, the timing is a little off, our personnel board is meeting tomorrow to see the the job, but it's it's the same job which was reclassified in two thousand and fourteen. By the personnel board, so the job responsibilities aren't changing. And interestingly, with the contractually, we agreed that the job would not be under a grade six in the SEIU and the 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 numbers line up almost perfectly for, you know, what the. It's just a different, it's the same job, it's just in the bargaining unit. Um, so we would just request, it's a busy time in recreation, as you know, so we'd request permission to post and fill. The job, which will just be a little slightly different formatted in the job description tomorrow night, personnel board, but given the timing of this meeting, I didn't want to have to wait two weeks after.
No, that's fine.
Personnel board meets.
Nope.
No, I just want to say that, you know, I think we got out ahead of ourselves on this one before you came to us and I just think we've got to be careful on that. That's all.
Okay.
Uh, I move that we authorize the human resource director to work with the town administrator and the recreation director to post and fill the position of recreation assistant. This is contingent upon the personnel board approving the position, um, that it be moved into the SEIU.
SEIU.
SEIU, I'm reading what it says, so SEIU.
All right, it's been seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose none, thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, appointments, reappointment process, establish open space committee, Westwood Cultural Council, healthcare review committee and municipal facility task force. Okay. So the open space committee is new?
We had one back in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, and they created an open space and recreation plan, which was adopted by the planning board in two thousand and endorsed by town meeting. It should be updated about every seven years.
Yeah.
It has not been, so we are now in the process of updating it, we chose open space recreation plan, updated one of our community compact agreements with the state. And in return, we were rewarded in a grant to hire a consultant to help us with public participation process. So the RFP went out, we received proposals last week, we will be hiring a consultant and we need the the committee of board and at large resident members. To work with this consultant and with our staff to develop the new plan, the update plan.
Uh, okay, so can I just make a suggestion, I mean, this is what you had in mind, when I look at the second page of this presentation, there's four, eight. People whose names we need to fill in here, can we, between now and our next meeting, give suggestions to Mike?
I hope so, so I I.
You're not looking for answers tonight.
Karen Katron, our our conservation agent, who's principally charged with updating this plan, has contacted these different boards and asked for representatives, but has not received replies from the ones that are still on.
Perfect, okay, so is that, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, I'm curious why there are two planning board members, two youth sports organization representatives, is it so at least one is present at the meetings or this is a big group?
The two planning board members, actually, we asked for one, they gave us two, conservation, we asked for one, they gave us two. For the youth sports, when this was done seventeen, eighteen years ago, we did have two representatives and it worked well because some sports are very different. You might have one that uses indoor facilities and one that uses outdoor facilities, and I think that works well, but I wasn't originally asking for two.
But it's an open space discussion, how does indoor facilities work?
Open, open space and recreation, so it's about recreation facilities as well.
Thank you.
So I I do think two of those are needed, but as far as the planning board and conservation commission, they just put forth two names, they wanted to have.
So I, so I guess, so then further on, it says open space committee for terms to expire June thirtieth, is this the same? Yeah, so could we just do it all, I'd rather do it all at once, is that okay?
I think that's fine, we want to get started as soon as possible, so I hope I have all the names on the twenty fifth.
Well, if.
Is there any seats that remain empty?
We'll fill them. We'll tag people.
Yellow names.
It's going to be like trying to get the Islington Task Force together.
That's what I worried about.
Not quite that big.
Yeah, and. It's pretty close.
It's also, it's more of a participatory board, they're asked to come to meetings and, you know, participate in the in the process at open meetings. There's a visioning session and a discussion item, but there's no action they're taking at those meetings, eventually a plan is prepared and adopted by the planning board. The planning board is the board that takes the action, so this is more an opportunity for involvement. The size is not as significant because it's not as important to maintain a farm because they are not taking action.
Okay, thanks, you Nora, so when I read the heading, Christine, the next one that we would look at is the Westwood Cultural Council?
Yeah, it it ended up actually not being ready for tonight, so I took it off.
Going back to the recreation, shouldn't we put the word recreation in this, open space and recreation?
That's what should be, open space and recreation planning committee.
Yeah, it's just on the heading.
All the paperwork is open space and we should put the recreation.
It should be open space and recreation planning committee.
Yeah.
Okay, Westwood Cultural Council will take a pass on, healthcare review committee, John Holmes as a member of the healthcare review committee. Representing the Westwood Custodians Chapter of SEIU Local Eight 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 for term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Now, he's replacing a retiree.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, opposed none, okay, the municipal facilities task force, uh, we are taking two actions. Or we proposed taking two actions, adding the chair of the school committee, Ms. Carol Lewis, as a member. And adding Emily Parks, the school superintendent, as an ex officio member.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, opposed none, okay, so we we owe you some work on that, Nora. Um, next up, Mike, is the reserve fund transfer request, correct?
Yep.
What what's going on here?
So what's going on here is that, um, Tom Philbin has gone, is going forward a number of projects. Um, some of which are funded by a grant and some of which are funded by town funds, school department has contributed, uh, to date. Uh, I believe it's almost eighty thousand dollars, uh, they originally intended to contribute fifty thousand, but then they were, they they found some additional things that needed to go forward. Um, and they decided to fund them, uh, in their budget. We committed to funding at least fifty thousand dollars to this project, the fifty thousand dollars in effect is monies we used to pay Tom's salary through the energy reserve. So you can think of it in terms of replacing that with a contribution toward the work that he's doing. We've now incorporated that position into the budget of DPW, um, and so we no longer will have to dip into this fund for funding the salary as we have in the past. Um, remember in the past, it was partly a grant and partly the town funding, now it's a hundred percent town funding. So he wants to keep going forward with his projects that he's got lined up, so he's asked that the that the board of selectmen approve this fifty thousand dollar transfer. The fund has two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in it, and so this would leave you with a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I think we need to be really, if we do this, really cautious with the balance of the funds, given the rising level of energy costs. As a result of the hurricanes that have occurred, or Harvey anyway, I think we might need the energy reserve account this year.
Yeah.
We don't know, so, um, I move we approve the transfer of fifty thousand from the reserve account.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed none. You said I was going fast. The future board.
Finish that sentence.
The future board of selectmen meetings, um, and I guess, I I just don't know all this, I was looking for some direction on this process. So we've taken a vote that there, we've opened the warrant, so taken a vote that we're initiating the process of having town meeting, Mike, how is that now transmitted to FinCom?
So, um, FinCom was planning to take, have a meeting on the twenty fifth, we've indicated to them, board of selectmen wasn't closing a warrant until the twenty fifth. So we couldn't possibly be at two meetings, plus you may have some additional business, namely the fire chief interviews for that night, so we wouldn't be able to go to the finance commission. So they moved their meeting on the twenty sixth.
Okay.
On the twenty sixth, then you will need to go to the finance commission, or somebody will need to go to a finance commission and present them with a summary of the articles.
Okay.
That we're going forward with at town meeting, um, and that just indicates that that's just a introduction to.
Yeah, I look at this one a little more seriously than just an introduction because there aren't two public hearings in the process, so it needs to be taken pretty seriously.
So you and I can prep offline.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine. Okay, so Christine, this list is great, so Westwood Day again is September twenty-second and twenty-third, Columbus Day holiday is October ninth. Uh, October twenty-four, okay, uh, Veterans Day, okay, so you don't have.
So we need to come up with some more meeting dates, is really the issue.
Right, we do, right, right, right. Is this the, this is the last two we have scheduled, twenty fifth and sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, do you want to just look right now real quick? We don't want to do the night before Halloween.
Correct.
And we don't, why?
Your kids are off in college.
The problem is.
I'll be running around to stores.
The only problem with that is that we're both in Texas the week before.
I know, that's really more the issue, is that you're not around to prepare for a meeting.
They're not coming back.
I'm not coming back until Sunday.
You're coming back Sunday, what date?
I just, I'm twenty-nine.
Oh, okay, we can't do that.
He's coming back, I just.
I'm coming back soon.
Only having one business meeting during the whole month of October is pretty unusual.
But you guys are gone the week of the twenty-third, right?
So we could, I mean, we could do be, obviously before the FinCom meeting.
Yeah, it's just not a lot of meeting time and here we've got a special town or a fall town meeting coming up, it's. We can do it, it's just really unusual, we usually have a lot of business going on and I feel like if we're not paying attention to other things, we're going to fall behind as we prepare for the annual town meeting.
I'm okay with moving it off to Monday, I mean, even to on the November second, the Thursday. Christine, four days of being home to. Because if they're not back, Christine's not back till the thirtieth.
Or we could do the sixth and have a meeting, a full meeting the week before the fall town meeting. Oh, I can't do the sixth, I can't do the sixth, no, the seventh I could do, no, I just, I said it and then I realized.
You know what, in order to, I'd rather do the second, is that, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me, yeah.
That's election day.
Yeah.
Election day, but not here.
Those state, state elections.
There are no, there's no state election this year.
Isn't there a primary?
Well, it's the municipalities.
It's just municipalities, there's no state election this year.
You just can't have a public hearing on election days, right?
There you go.
We don't have an election day.
Let's, let's do Thursday, November second, going once, going twice, sold, eleven, two. And then Christine, the next one, you were looking at November thirteenth.
Well, that's the meeting.
So that's fall town meeting, so you'll have a tentatively scheduled six thirty PM meeting right before fall town.
Then we want to put a tentative date and answer the seventh as as a holder in case we need something.
Let's go to the seventh or the ninth.
Are you back on the seventh?
I'm not going away, I just wasn't available on the seventh. If we have it on the second, I don't think we need, I mean, if we want to hold it, sure.
But let's, yeah.
But I can't see anything happening between the second and the seventh that would have us meeting on.
What about the second and the ninth? Just in case we need to do any work, well, at that point, everything's going to be set, so.
Everything's going to be set, I think the second. Everything's gonna be set, I think the second, we just have to.
Be robust?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to be ready for it before you go away to know what we might be doing and, and to start looking beyond the town meeting.
Yeah, we're not offline entirely, and we're.
Yeah, well, I'll have my laptop, we can still. And because Pam starts discussing budgets, you know, things are moving. Okay, I, I think the second, I don't think we have to, if we're doing that, then I, I would say the seventh if we didn't have the second.
So at this point, we have Monday, September twenty-fifth, Monday, October sixteen, and Thursday, November second.
In worst-case scenario, we could always do like the morning.
Yeah, right.
Like on the eighth or something, if we needed to, and John.
If we had any major action.
Right, your Wednesdays, you're here most of the time. You could do like Wednesday, like the eighth, if we really needed to.
November second, okay.
Thursday.
And we'll hold.
Yeah, I, I agree, if we had to plug something in.
Or, or the morning of the eighth even, you know?
Okay. Does that work?
What's happening on Veterans Day this year, given it's falling on a Saturday?
Veterans Day, right now, the preliminary plans are that we will not, we will be foregoing Veterans Day on the, here, um, and we will be having a joint celebration of Veterans Day on Zavarian Field with a fundraising football game between, uh, disabled veterans and I think former Pats players.
When?
Uh, on Veterans Day. So instead of a eleven o'clock ceremony at Veterans Park, we will join them at noon time, uh, at the. So I haven't given you anything because I haven't affirmed up, but, uh, currently being discussed by the Veterans Organization.
Interesting.
So is the, the tenth is then a holiday, right?
Tenth is a holiday, yeah, well, it's, the eleventh is.
No, but what, what's the day off? What is the?
Oh, the, the holiday is, geez, I don't know, we usually.
I thought that's required.
Yeah, the eleventh is required, but we.
The day before, if it's on a Saturday, and it's the day after, if it's on a Sunday.
The government holiday.
Right.
Schools off any day?
It's off.
There you go.
So, uh, that'll be, that'll be out all of it.
It's in the, it's in all the.
Veterans Day is a holiday.
If I'm on a Saturday.
Well, yeah, it, it, it does, from the point of view of celebration of the day, but from the point of view of a vacation day, we're obligated to give a day.
So the law is, if it's on a Saturday, it's a Friday, if it's on a Sunday, it's a Monday.
The dent, the dent will be the day.
It's just like the Fourth of July.
Sorry, can you go into December so that, um, Janice will have to do some scheduling for public hearings for alcohol license renewals?
For December?
Yeah.
I think we should do the twenty-seventh after Thanksgiving.
Except that, I would say yes, except that that's, um, a day off for the schools, Nancy, so. Anyone has schoolchildren like John or myself, we could take the Thanksgiving and make it a long holiday weekend.
And you're not back by Monday night, so the kiddies can go to school the next day?
Maybe I'll be back by seven-thirty, I'll be back Monday night, but maybe not by seven-thirty.
And actually, that's my, that's my birthday.
That's right, you're the day before my husband, which is the next day.
More importantly.
That's right.
That's a good reason not to have a meeting.
Okay.
I did it one year where I had a meeting and it was not a good day.
So the twenty-seventh, I mean, do you wanna do the twenty-eighth?
That's Nancy Hudson's birthday, I just, did you not hear that?
And it's a big one.
So what do we, go to the next week?
The fourth, the day after the tree lighting?
That's, yeah, the tree lighting, I can't, that's, we're gonna be a month between full meetings.
Wow, we know, we've gotta do something more in November.
We really need to.
Why, why did we skip over the twentieth? Is there a reason?
It's, we usually do, but I can do that this year.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Yeah, you're all right?
Yep.
So let's do the twentieth.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Go to the fourth and the eighteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Nancy, can you do the eighteenth?
Yep.
Perfect. Do you need just to go into January too?
No, I mean, I can do on the, on the twentieth and the fourth, we can talk.
Yeah, what you need when you come back, um, is the FinCom schedule.
Yeah.
The January and February.
Yeah.
If you plug that in, we'll know when we.
Okay.
Have partial days.
Okay, are we good? Can we move to the minutes? Do you have meeting minutes from May sixteen, two thousand and seventeen? Any amendments?
Not May sixteen.
You okay with May sixteen?
Yeah, I move approval of the May sixteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose none.
Um, Christine, on May thirty-first, minutes page seven. Seventh paragraph that starts with Jim Dwyer.
Yep.
Third line, it says the town needs to remember that the town, it should be the town needs to remember that MMO is a private entity?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I move approval with that amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose none?
We'll abstain from these. I was not present, so I will.
Oh, okay.
I move approval as written.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All abstain.
Is that it?
That's it.
Uh, June fifth.
Yep, that's it.
I just did June fifth.
Oh, that was it, oh.
That's it.
Okay. Any inquiry from the public or press? Okay, at this time? Other business?
When is the fire station going to be open, Mr. Gillett?
You asked him. I was trying to, I was trying to get by that, Mike, see?
Yeah.
Told him today I was gonna ask.
Hey, the fence is down, it looks great.
It's a beautiful vacant building.
By the way, the, the clock on it is off two minutes from side to side, just so the record's. I came by tonight and it stopped at the red light.
What are you doing, looking at both sides?
Well, I was sitting at the red light, waiting, waiting.
You drive too slow.
I looked at the clock.
They didn't get back to me. I asked him and Bill to get back to me, I'll get back to you guys tomorrow.
Okay.
I meant to call on my way home, 'cause I, I knew I was gonna get to answer the question.
I told him today I was gonna ask.
And I took you seriously.
You know, I, I, once we have the date, we need to let the public know, and, uh, I know it's imminent, we need a date.
I'm writing mine.
Well, yeah, Mike and I have talked about, you know, having some sort of Islington Open House.
Which I think would be great, I mean.
And we're trying to coordinate some with, uh, Georgiou across the street. They're trying to get the three buildings and the police station as well, but.
The police station is probably not.
I always advise not to do that, so I'm not gonna do that.
No, it's gonna be too, too dangerous a site to, uh, open it up to the public.
I'm writing myself a note, I'll get you tomorrow.
And I, let me take that back, it's not a dangerous site, it still will be under construction with the building coming down. It's not really appropriate to have a full-blown open house at the, um, police station, even though it will be accessible and, and used.
Thank you.
Okay, any motion to adjourn?
No, are we going into executive session?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, at this time, the Board of Selectmen will be going into executive session to discuss four issues. One issue related to potential litigation with the Girl Scouts, one issue related to the negotiations of the potential transfer of real property, one issue related to an employee contract negotiation with the Town Administrator, and one issue related to a possible land acquisition, all of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussion were an open session, the board will not be returning to open session.
I move we go into executive session.
One of the items that you're considering.
Yes.
If you were to decide to approve it, you would need to do that in open session.
Okay, but there's nothing that prohibits us from going into executive session to discuss it.
Oh, but you wanna come back into open session?
If, if, you probably wanna preserve that right, should you.
Okay.
Decide to approve one of the agreements that you're looking at.
How about, okay, I move we go into executive session to discuss the four issues the Chair noted, and we reserve the possibility that we may return to open session at the end of executive session.
I'll second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Okay.
Just to be clear, the alternative would be to make that approval at the next meeting.
Right, that's, that's actually what I was thinking.
We preserve the opportunity to come back if we want to.
At this time, yeah.
Okay, thank you.